Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the New Brunswick Board of Education meeting. I'll read the opening announcement. Adequate public notice of this meeting was provided by the Secretary of the Board on May 21st, 2018 to the Home News Tribune and the Clerk of the City of New Brunswick. The time and location of the meeting and all meetings of this body are posted in City Hall, 78 Bayard Street, New Brunswick. Roll call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Here.
Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Shikaitis.
Here.
Mrs. Solis.
Here.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Varela. Mr. Ortiz.
Here.
Dr. Caldwell.
Here.
We have a forum.
Wonderful. If you could stand. Let's look.
United States of America and to the public who stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A reminder, the next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 19th, 2019, beginning at 7:00 PM at New Brunswick High School in the auditorium, right here. Right now, I would like to turn it over to our attorney, Mr. Hendrix.
Yes, during the past month, it came to our attention that our board member of long standing, Ron Hush, was moving out of the district. I was asked by the superintendent business administrator to say, can he stay on the board? He was just recently elected, but the statute 18A 12.3 says if you leave the district, you must immediately be removed from the board. Mr. Hush was informed to that, and therefore, we have a vacancy, and there's a resolution on here now to accept his resignation, so some board members should move ahead.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes, reluctantly.
Mrs. Seawood. Mrs. Shikaitis.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes, and he will be missed, most definitely.
Yes.
Now, item number four.
Yes, so upon that, the responsibility which is placed upon me is to notify the board that we're going to be short a board member, and they should think of replacements for this meeting amongst themselves. We could have deferred that to the next meeting, but as a person who would be selected, if a person is selected, we'd have to... Then would serve a full year before they would stand for election. However, if they were appointed at this meeting, they would run in the April election of this year for the remainder of two years of Ron Hush's term. With that in mind, I would suggest that a motion be made to nominate a replacement member.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Did we... Okay, did we before the name?
No, this is just to put the nomination up for vote, and we'll give it, well, yes, for candidates.
Perfect.
Next.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, now, I presume the board would take any board member who would like to present a nominee to the rest of the board can do so now.
I would like to make a nomination. I would like to nominate Jennifer Sevilla. Jennifer has lived in New Brunswick since childhood and is a graduate of New Brunswick Public Schools. And currently, she has been working for St. Peter's, doing programming in our schools in various health and prevention areas. And I think this is a demonstrated commitment to our schools and to the well-being of the students. She clearly has the best interests of our students at heart, and I am very excited to nominate her to be part of our Board of Education.
Are there any other nominations by any board member or any other member they would like to recommend? Seeing none, then there should be a motion to accept the nomination.
So a motion. Second. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes, welcome to the board. As is our custom, we'll administer the oath of office. Coming up, please, if you would.
She is now officially... She is now officially a board member. She will stand for election to serve the remainder of Ron Hush's term if she's elected in April.
So now, Mrs. Sevilla is going to read the required oath of office for New Jersey school board members.
I, Jennifer Sevilla, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same in the government established in the United States and this state under the authority of the people, so help me God. I, Jennifer Sevilla, do solemnly swear or affirm that I possess the qualifications prescribed by the law for the office of a member of a board of education, and that I am not disqualified as a voter pursuant of RS 1941-41, nor disqualified due to conviction of a crime or offense listed in New Jersey Stat 18A 12-1, and that I faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of that office according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Great, thank you very much.
Welcome to the board. Item number five, the minutes of January 15th, 2019. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yes.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes, welcome.
And Miss Sevilla.
Perfect. Okay, item number... Number six, the superintendent's report will be done by Dr. Quine.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the month of January, district-wide student suspensions are at 122. District-wide harassment, intimidation, and bullying confirmed reports, five. Student enrollment for the month of February, 10,324, district-wide. Student attendance for the month of January, 93 percent. And certificated staff attendance for the month of January, 96 percent. That concludes the report.
Is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
The report, a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Sadowski.
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood.
Yes.
Mrs. Shikaitis.
Yes.
Mrs. Solis.
Yeah.
Mr. Spencer.
Yes.
Mrs. Varela.
Yes.
Mr. Ortiz.
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell.
Yes.
I will so note that Miss Sevilla will abstain from all votes.
Thank you. Item number seven, the student representative's report. Ms. Zoe Schopf.
Good evening. I would like to start off by saying, students in New Brunswick High School continue to exhibit the true Zebra spirit. This is evident as students pass quietly and swiftly to their classes while having respectful and school-appropriate conversations with their friends along the way. More than in prior... More than in prior years, students are attending sports events in the large numbers cheering our teams on no matter what the score. Students continue to greet guests with a handshake and by introducing themselves. New Brunswick High School's Rhyme Program will be participating in the Black History Month competition PowerPoint presentations at Colgate. The National Honor Society will be hosting the Blood Drive on March 21st. Members are currently promoting the event throughout school. On February 21st, at 2:30, students are invited to attend the NBEF Annual Scholarship Kickoff Pizza Workshop. There are many door prizes available, and one student will win a $1,000 scholarship. That's really nice. On January 23rd, 2019, New Brunswick High School had a family attendance night. This program was well-attended and provided information for students and their families regarding the importance of being in school and in classes every day. On January 24th, the New Brunswick High School Band Choir and Orchestra performed their winter concert. These excellent performers were well-received by the large crowd of family and friends. Stamp testing took place January 24th, 25th, and February 11th in the high school, with over 150 students participating. On Saturday, January 26th, approximately seven New Brunswick High School students, their families, and Mr. Redler attended a welcome-back Audesa ceremony at Rutgers University. Audesa students make the commitment to attend academic learning programs every Saturday. One of ongoing scholarship information sessions for students took place in February 1st. The ASVAB testing was administered February 5th. Sixty students took advantage of this testing opportunity. On February 8th, students attended the high school Valentine's Day dance. All attendees enjoyed the evening as they danced throughout the night. Lastly, New Brunswick High School is hosting a parent-teacher night this Thursday, February 21st, 2019, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM.
Thank you for that thorough report. Appreciate it. Moving on to item number eight, Facilities Committee Report. Mr. Spencer.
Yes, the solar panel project at Lincoln Annex is completed. We're in the process of working on the construction of the solar panels at the high school. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. The Policy Committee Report. Mr. Benito Ortiz.
Yes, Mr. President. The Policy Committee did not meet for the month of February, so no report to give at this time.
Thank you very much. The Athletic Committee Report. Ms. Sadowski.
Athletic Committee did not meet this evening because we are hosting the Middle Six County, Greater Middle Six County Conference tournaments here at New Brunswick, so everybody in the athletic department was a little busy. Our young men are going to be playing. In fact, I think they beat Old Bridge, who was number one, so we're well on our way. And as Zoe reported, they've had a lot of student participation and attendance at all our athletic events this winter, and wrestling team has done very well. I know in the Region 20s, it was just held this past weekend, several of our wrestlers did very, very well. I don't have exactly what their placement was, but I know that they did very well. So we've had a very successful winter season so far. Thank you.
It seems our basketball team is playoff-ready. During the regular season, in years past, they've been... They struggled through the regular season, but come to life in playoffs, so that's pretty amazing. It's good news. Item number 10. Oh, look, the report.
We do need a motion to...
Okay, for the report, yeah.
No, there's no bank reconciliation this month.
Yeah, so moving on to item number 10, the Curriculum Committee Report. Mr. Ortiz.
Yes, the Curriculum Committee met. We had a short presentation with Dr. Johnson on the PTEC program. I don't know if you're aware of the PTEC program. I know it's on our website. We finally put it in there. But what he was presenting to us was the basic logistics on how this program's going to work, where we're planning to put it, the hiring of principal, the hiring of teachers, and then working out the logistics to how we're going to get our students to be part of this program. This is a program where we're going to select 40 to 50 students to be the first cohort to receive or be a part of the PTEC program. And very shortly, let me just tell you a little bit about PTEC. It's a program where our school year is extended for six years. So if you start in ninth grade, you'll stay for an additional two years in high school, working with Middle Six County College, and the end goal is that you will receive an associate's degree through that six-year period. The good part about this is you also have partnership with corporations. This is basically in the STEAM and engineering field, you will have the opportunity to do internship with various corporations that signed up with the PTEC program. And the promising thing of that is that there are a couple of ways you can go when you graduate this program. Number one, you can continue your higher education by going to a four-year college and finishing your degree in a four-year college, or there's a possibility that the company you are doing the internship with will hire you upon graduation of the program. So there's a lot of moving parts to this program, and Dr. Johnson was just explaining to the Curriculum Committee the logistics and how this is going to go about. We're excited about this program. We can't wait till it comes to our district. I know it's going to be effective, and we hope to expand it in the future.
That's my report. Thank you, Mr. General.
Oh, I'm sorry. We have some resolutions that'll be part of the consent agenda items.
Okay, perfect. That's very exciting.
Yes, very good.
Thank you. We're breaking new ground in education curriculum, so...
Before I leave, I think there's only three districts in the state that has this program coming into the school district. We have New Brunswick, Patterson... And Burlington.
Nice.
So we've been selected, and we're going to take full advantage of it.
Perfect, thank you. Great, great report. Item number 11, Public Relations Committee Report. Mrs. Solis.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. So I have several things to report to the audience this evening. Thank you to all the principals that have filled me in on all the events that are going on. This is a short month, but a very eventful one. Lincoln Annex is having their family night with Food Bank of New Jersey on the 21st. They're also having their Black History Month celebration on the 21st. Woodrow Wilson is having their Black History Month Assembly on the 20th, and they're going to be showcasing the life and times of Paul Robeson told by Marvin Jefferson. Health Sciences High School had their senior presentations from Robert Wood on the 1st. Their eighth-grade admissions testing was held on the 2nd, and their junior Robert Wood Johnson University Hospital orientation was held on the 5th. Roosevelt School had their Black History Month Assembly on the 14th. Lincoln School is having their Black History Month celebration showcasing heroes of history on February 25th. We did receive... The board did receive invitations for Read Across America scheduled for Friday, March 1st, from Paul Robeson, Lord Sterling, Roosevelt, and Red Shaw. Thank you for those timely invitations. I'm sure that this is something that we all look forward to attending. It's a fun time for us to be able to go out and read to the students. I did just want to acknowledge all of the students... I'm sorry, all the teachers that have made a point to decorate their classrooms and their doors, to showcase all of the important Black Americans that have done wonders for this country. It's an excellent time for us to reflect on how far this country has come and how much further we have to go. So it is something so important for us to just let the students see the important people in our history that have made such a difference to this country. I did also want to thank all the principals and teachers that volunteer their time during the school dances. My third grader experienced her first Valentine's Day dance last week, and she had an excellent time, partying with a DJ and dancing with her friends. So as unassuming as these school dances may seem to all of us, sometimes they are a very big deal to all the elementary school kids, and they love it so much. So thank you, guys, for all the work that you do and for just putting your time into these students' lives, because it means a whole lot to them. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mrs. Solis, and it's important to remember, in 1619, it's 2019, 400 years ago, the first 20 or so slaves came to Jamestown in this country, and so this is the 400th anniversary of slavery in the United States. And I don't hear that much about it, but that's an important thing that we need to acknowledge. And you've got to know our history, or we're doomed to repeat it, so that's essential. Item number 11 again, 11, 11, eight, it's really 12. Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, probably the biggest thing is the commission, I think I've mentioned before, is in the process of establishing a 21 and 0 for program. Many of the students who are on the autism spectrum or multiply disabled age out, and parents don't have any place to send their young people, and so the hope is that the state will approve a program, and so making a strong effort to do that. So then, my report. One of the wonderful things, and I applaud the administration for thoroughly letting the community know many of the great things that are going on in the city, and letting the community know that help is accepted and appreciated. And as you know, literacy in every urban community in the country is a challenge. And so actually, the church that I attend, the United Methodist Church of New Brunswick, wanted to do what they can to help. For 30 years, I think, they've been tutoring on Mondays at Lord Sterling School. And again, they're tutoring, no religious, anything else, just some volunteers that really care about our students, and they wanted to take it a step further. So they are establishing a writing contest and a logo contest. And the logo contest is for high schoolers to put together a logo around the theme of reading and writing, and to really kind of make a visual, kind of stimulated approach. And one of the things that is important is that many of us want to do our own things. I think it's good that students actually come up, and they design something that's meaningful to them. And the second is really a... And the church is hopefully working with other organizations to put money up to have a writing contest, to really have the students write, and the idea is that students can learn, they can actually make money with their brains. You know, so often, media puts forward this idea that if you rap, or you dance, or you sing, or you play sports, that that's how you make money. But you can make a lot, as somebody who's written books, you can make money... Not that I mean a lot of money, but you can make money writing. And so it's important that our students understand that using their brains, and they're brilliant, can be very, very powerful. So I'm excited about that. I'm thankful for the district is opening their arms for this kind of thing, and so I hope we'll have some additional literacy initiatives. One of the things, as we talk about STEM, as we talk about technology and engineering and math, that we often forget is that if you aren't literate, you will not be able to understand STEM. And so often, they get all excited about engineering careers, forgetting that many students have been left behind because of literacy. So we all, as a community, should really come together to make sure that all of our students have the support. We're doing what we can in the school, but we need the community to be part of it. So with that, we'll move to item number 14, actually. The public comments. Are there comments from the public?
Buenas noches, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Yolanda Hernandez.
My name is Yolanda Hernandez.
I'm living on 24th Louis in New Brunswick.
24th Street in New Brunswick.
Como todos saben, nosotros venimos por el mismo tema que hemos venido hablando.
That you all know I committed for the same letter that I committed before.
I want to start with this. Nuestros niños merecen lo mejor.
Our children deserve the best.
Nuestros hijos son el futuro. Su salud y educación deben ser nuestras principales prioridades.
Our children are the future. Their health and their education should be our big priorities.
La mala calidad del aire está informando a nuestros hijos y a los miembros que trabajan en dichas escuelas.
The bad quality of air conditioning is getting our children sick and even the members who attend the schools.
Nosotros hemos estado buscando investigaciones.
We have been researching.
Y encontramos que en Harvard...
And we found that Harvard University...
hizo un estudio donde encontró que los estudiantes obtuvieron puntuaciones más bajas en exámenes cuando acaban de pasar por un año caldoso.
So there was a Harvard University study where students were found to have lower scores in exams when they had just gone through very hot days in school because of non-air-conditioned schools.
Por falta de aire acondicionado, los estudiantes de bajos ingresos y de grupos minoritarios se vieron más afectados por el calor que los demás.
Low-income and minority-group students were more affected by heat and others, and the air conditioning in the schools practically eliminated completely the negative impact of the heat.
El aire acondicionado eliminaría por completo todo su problema.
So I'm sorry. So the air conditioning will completely eliminate that problem.
El estudio se basó en datos de 10 millones de estudiantes estadounidenses de las clases de secundaria.
The study was based on data from 10 million of U.S. high school students from 2001 to 2014 who took the PSAT exams several times.
En promedio, los logros de los estudiantes se redujeron en equivalente al 1% del valor de un año de aprendizaje por cada logro, por cada grado.
An average student achievement was reduced by the equivalent of 1% of the value of one year learning for each additional degree Fahrenheit in temperature during the year.
Esto nos dice que un sistema escolar como el de New Brunswick tiene estudiantes que se ven muy afectados con los salones calientes.
This tells us that a school system like New Brunswick has students who are very affected by classrooms that are very hot.
So el aire acondicionado en los salones de clases lo cambiaría todo, mostró la investigación.
So the air conditioning in the classroom, based on the study, it demonstrated that it will change everything.
Compensamos casi todos los impactos negativos de la exposición acumulativa al calor en el logro académico de los estudiantes.
Compensated almost all the negative impacts of the cumulative exposure to the heat and the academic achievement of the students.
Los investigadores estiman que el aire acondicionado escolar compensa más de 25 mil dólares por salón de clases por año en ganancias futuras perdidas debido a los aumentos de temperatura.
Researchers estimate that school air conditioning outweighs more than 25,000 per classroom per year in the future loss gains due to temperature increases predicted by the climate change models.
Prolongado por los modelos del cambio climático. Los beneficios parecen ser sustancialmente mayores que los costos de instalación o operación de dicha infraestructura.
The benefits appear to be substantially greater than the cost of installing and operating the infrastructure.
Nosotros mandamos un email a todos los miembros de la junta.
We sent a email to all four members.
Quisiéramos que se dieran un tiempo para leer.
Would you like me to take some time to read that email?
Porque yo como mamá estoy sumamente preocupada.
Because me, as a mom, I'm very concerned.
Tengo tres hijos y espero que todos puedan tener una carrera.
And I hope that they can all have a career.
Y tenemos unas preguntas para señor presidente, pero veo que está ausente.
And we have questions for the superintendent, but we noticed that he's not present.
Las quiere escuchar el señor presidente de la junta.
Would you like to listen to the questions?
Well, why don't you wait until the next... Have you... I would recommend, as I always do, that you be with him in private and ask those questions to him directly. He's answered, you know, he's answered the questions in the past. We've explained where we are. We agree that we want to change too. We're totally in agreement. We don't have the authority to do that. But I thank you for the report, and I thank you for emailing, and I will read it. But thank you, thank you very much.
Sí, nosotros el informe completo lo mandamos a su email y esperamos que lo tenga una premio.
So, yes, we sent a email, we hope to have an answer.
Esperamos tener una opinión privada con el señor intendente.
And we do have to have a private meeting with the superintendent.
Ya que esto cada vez es más interesante para los padres y para las, para las autoridades educativas, yo creo que también es algo potencialmente delicado.
Because this is very important for us parents and of course, for you, should be important as well.
Thank you.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Next, please say your name and address, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Daniel Moore, 333 Somerset Street. First, I'd like to start off with the good news. I would like to thank what a great job the maintenance crew has been with, with the snowstorms and all. Like I said, wow, why would a student have to be made mad at them too? When they do it so quick and such a good job, how they would take the snow their way. So great job with them, even though they're ready for the next one tomorrow. Next one, I will say thank you to the coaching staff, staff, teacher security due to where you are, putting your heart out for our children, for our sports, coming out of your pockets financially. Like I said, I do have a nephew that's here, and I see you so much good heart. And I said, well, you helping out, thank you for that also. But two things I'm hearing tonight that I have to say I'm pretty upset for, believe me. Being in pain right now, I have to just give you my fact that I surely did make sure that I could not miss this meeting tonight. So excuse me the way I am sounding nervous, I'm just in pain, but as of last year, due to where the situation with the heat and the air conditioners, due to where, why hasn't the Board of Education did anything to any school to support? Due to where on record at City Council meeting, on a recording stating, wow, the Board of Education needed any financial help to put air conditioner then, that the city of New Brunswick would help? What they're saying is, wow, the Board of Education never put in a report to get any help for these air conditioners, due to where, yes, Livingston, Roosevelt, Lincoln, due to where, yes, it's extremely hot. Whereas, why haven't, due to where it's cold now, it's not like the summer time gets here, why hasn't the Board of Education?
Good, good response. So, so I know you haven't been here, and a couple of meetings, we actually addressed that, that the state of New Jersey, because 87, 80% of our, our budget is from the state, controls that. And so we've made the request, we do not have the authority unilaterally to make that change. And so we talked about it, actually, about, in about four or five different board meetings. So we actually went through that process. We are not avoiding it. We agree, we would love, actually not just that, but a whole bunch of other things we would like done. But remember, 80% of our budget comes from the state. They control, we cannot do things to buildings without their approval. And so, so we've, we've actually covered that, so I appreciate it. You had another item?
Okay, my, my point is due to where the city, like I said, they would help. Have you talked to the city about any financial, due to where what, they said if you needed help?
We cannot make, these buildings technically were, were built by the state. So we need the state's approval for any of, of those changes, you know, at a certain dollar amount. So we can't unilaterally do that, so that's why. So you had a second question?
Well, like I said, please do, do to where it's on record, on video stating with, when President Fleming, when he was president, it said, wow, if the Board of Education needs any more help to help out, they will. But like I said, no one has stepped up to the city yet to ask for the donations then, due to where they're saying they're willing to help, it's on record.
They're having communications with the city, thanks.
Well, well, please, if they're willing to donate something, please look forward to it. Like I said, they may, due to where kids, they have asthma during the summer, they have breathing problems. Please do look into it.
Thank you very much, thank you.
And then also, as far as with the weather, 25 below zero, due to where you had our children, how, 25 below zero, how come we just didn't have a closed school then? Do you feel that that's just a local emergency, what, that many kids have to walk to school? Or, or call it delayed open? Please keep that in my mind, do you want your child out there 25 below zero?
First of all, my child is here. So second of all, I'm not sure when it was 25 below zero. And so, so please, please, again, that, that's, if you have that concern, please speak to us.
Well, yes, I'm speaking about, I pray that we don't get weather like that again, but yeah, yes, due to where, I'm not, I didn't write it down, excuse me, about three or four weeks ago, yes, 25 degrees below zero, due to where you sent a message out of phone, okay? You know it's going to be 25 below zero, just have our children dressed extra warm, due to where what, some kids can't afford, afford warm clothes? So yes, please look into that, okay, 20 below zero, please what? Call no school or, or delay opening or something, due to where you have so many kids that really have to walk, due to where how you send your child go to school? What, maybe has transportation, even though what, I know my child has transportation, but I look out for every other child thinking of just well under my child. So please, I hope, like I said, we don't get cold weather like that again, but I hope you do look into that for the safety of our children being frostbitten and all. I meant, come on, that was, where what, how they even mentioned anyone to be outside, what, five minutes? 25 below zero, how they would get frost, frostbitten? So please do look into that, where not to have our children out in the cold cold, please.
Mr. General.
I'd like to address that real quick. I, I understand, you're, you're absolutely right about the cold. And I'd like to let you know what steps we did take underneath Dr. Johnson's leadership, because closing school is not an option often, because you go through the end of June, and then we have other issues, right? So on that day, those two days that it was freezing cold, what Dr. Johnson did is, he made sure that every school had coats, had the ability to make sure all the students were taken care of. We went and we spoke to all the bus companies, we had extra buses on the road, we had staff members driving around, we had extra shuttles, so that no student ever waited for a bus more than five minutes. We both did that in the morning and afternoon, that Thursday and Friday. So we took extra steps to make sure that all the students were very safe, that no buses were late. We had staff members coming in at 5:00 in the morning, they started the buses the night before. They came in at 5:00 in the morning, started buses, were ready to jump any of the buses in case buses didn't start from the extreme weather. We had extra buses on the road in case of the buses that we contract with didn't start and get there on time. So I can tell you that we took a lot of precautions to make sure all the students were safe and no student was out in the cold. And those are the type of things that we will continue to do in that type of weather.
Okay, okay, thank you, I will take your word, but like I said, I know every child is not safe with, like I said, Daniel, the weather, and like I said, due to where I seen it with my own eyes, and that's my purpose of speaking up about it. But please, with future, yes, do look into that, what, possible delayed openings then, due to where, like I said, having our children out in that cold weather.
Thank you, thank you. Any other comments, can you say your name and address?
Sure. My name is Luke Kimmel. I'm the director of New Labor, we're a representative here in New Brunswick, our address is 55 Patterson Street, second floor. And some of the people here are parents of, you know, kids in school, sitting, also members of our organization. So I was here at the last meeting, and I think you mentioned, right now, based on the previous speakers we're talking about, talking about the SDA funding, which is long-term solutions. And I think the last meeting was mentioning that for June 30th, there would be some kind of possibility of funds to do a temporary solution to air conditioning in schools, am I correct?
Mr. General, do you want to address that?
Yeah, it was mentioned in terms of getting numbers and funding on what those costs would be.
Right, so assuming there's no, you know, unforeseen circumstances based on cash flow, I think that's something we kind of know right now. So is there money in the budget right now for air conditioning?
In the 1819 budget that we're in, that ends in June 30th, there is no money in the budget for air conditioning. We are currently building the 1920 budget. And we will receive our state aid the end of February or the beginning of March. The budget is due five days later, and we're still working through that process now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Can you say your name and address? Anybody else? Five, four, three, two.
Charlie Brown, New Brunswick. I want to first of all congratulate and wish all the best to new board member. And thank you for, for stepping up. I also want to wish everybody happy Black History Month. And I want you guys to know that the initiative you took to call for a commercial avenue to be renamed is hopefully a result in tomorrow night, ordinance for the City Council to do just that. And glad that's moving forward. And I guess, first question I, I need to know is, when did Mr. Hush move out of New Brunswick? Through the chair, probably Charlie would be the best person.
Not sure exactly. He would be gone in February, I think he moved in mid-January, but after the last meeting.
Thank you. And also for the attorney through the chair, when did he submit that resignation?
I don't know.
January 16.
Okay. So it was alluded that the reason that the new member was appointed tonight was because the election for the seat would be able to be in April, so it's confirming that there, there will be a two-year seat on the ballot this election?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. And would it not be possible to hold the election in April, but also leave the seat vacant until the election?
I mean, no, we're supposed to fill it within 30 days by statute, or the commissioner of the county superintendent's office can inform the person. So the answer is no.
Okay, well, wait, it's been like 65 days, no?
I read it 30.
Okay. Well, I'm just curious, so, so there's, there's no way, in your view, that it'd be possible to leave the seat vacant and hold the election as early as, as the upcoming election?
You have to fill the seat. We, the board, have to fill the seat if there's a vacancy, we want a full complement, so. We don't gather around elections, but the way it turns out, we appoint someone now, they run in April. We, we appointed someone in March that would serve the full term. So you're asking the board to keep it vacant, so we can deal with the election? We want a full complement on the board, at least that's the policy that I would advocate. And apparently the board agreed.
I'm not, I'm not asking the board to do anything, I'm asking questions about what the possibilities were. I understand what was done, and I do have a few questions and concerns about the process. So the process, was there any more to the process?
No.
Than what we witnessed tonight?
No.
Okay.
Just other than I called board members and sort of the PA, alerting them that Mr. Hush was leaving and there would be an opening? We would hope that we would have a candidate for tonight's meeting? If we didn't, then we would do it next month. And apparently the board acted on that.
Okay, and so Ms. Sevilla is the, is the candidate, she just so happened to be here when she was, she was nominated. And I'm concerned because, you know, historically, there've been two other times that members have resigned since the board has been elected. And the first time, you guys did everything right, and you had an open process where you solicited applications and resumes from the community, from interested parties. And you had five people put their name up there, one of them got the job. And that was only after a process that involved their resumes being public and them submitting to interviews. Can I ask, was Ms. Sevilla interviewed?
I think she works in the district, and all the board members know her from what I heard tonight. I don't know her personally, till now, I met her tonight.
Okay, were, were any students consulted in this decision?
So, so Charlie, you know, if, if we had waited till March and put somebody in, and they'd be there for a year, you'd be complaining about that. So, so what, what, what we did, in the best interest of voters in the city, is we got someone in now, the election is, is in a few months. And so, so then the, the will of the voters will decide who is here. And, and that's actually the process that I would think you wouldn't want.
I'm all about voting in elections, I think it's great that you have an elected board now. And I'm asking questions about the process by which the interim appointment was made, and I was told that January 16th is when Mr. Hush resigned. So if the board had taken action in terms of promoting if there was a vacancy, there would have been a full month that applications and resumes could have been submitted, and you could have done like you did last time, had the candidates come in for interviews before your regular meeting, and, and then make your choice at the regular meeting. And I don't see why that process wasn't done. Of course, the second time there was a vacancy, that process wasn't done, there was no process. And, and I'm just concerned that, you know, now we're setting a precedent that, you know, the board's just going to fill vacancies without having an open process. And I don't see why that couldn't have been done.
There's no requirements in the law for the process you just stated. We can do it, or we can do it any way we choose. The board has the right and the privilege to appoint someone, hopefully sooner, so they can be before the public, for the public's consent, if the public so chooses. And that's it, so that's what we, we went that route. There's other routes?
Yeah. And I, and I'm suggesting that for the good of the voters and the parents of people of New Brunswick, it's always better to have an open process. And that, and that's my point, and I know you said the exact same thing last time when, when I complained, when the board didn't have a process, you said, we don't have to have a process. I get it, it's better when it's a process, that's my point. And I hope that if there ever is another vacancy, that the board will encourage applications far and wide instead of, you know, just, just having a closed process and selecting someone that the public doesn't get to know about until they're actually out there. I'll move on. So you, you mentioned about something that, you know, we need state approval for changes beyond a top, a certain dollar amount, I think you're talking about school construction, capital projects? The dollar amount I've heard alerted to was 500,000, is that, is that, is that a meaningful figure as far as when the SDA has to be involved?
Mr. General?
Yeah.
500K. And, and tell me then, was the SDA involved in the Lincoln Annex School construction project, or no?
No, because Lincoln Annex, when it was originally began to be built, was administrative offices.
Okay, so that was a multimillion dollar project that this district was able to build without the SDA?
Correct.
Okay, so if it was possible before, it certainly can happen again. And I would encourage the board members, especially the new board member, to be, be active in terms of lobbying the SDA to help us. But that may not work, and that may not be enough. Because presently the SDA is out of money. They need legislature to approve more money, they can't do any more projects without that. So the city, the leaders of this city are going to have to find a way to fix these problems in these schools, and in some cases to replace these schools. And I hope that the facility, the next facilities committee meeting report is more than a couple of sentences, because we have real facilities issues at these schools. And I hope that the local leaders will step up and show the leadership that we so sorely need to make this happen. And again, I say, I say it with the parents and the community members who are out here, calling for what we need, those schools to be upgraded or replaced, thank you.
Any other comments? Please. Please, again, we're, this isn't the same subject, is it?
I have only one question.
Okay.
We was, last year, September, at the Board of Education, with the Intimate Office. And he say he has possible answer for January. And then we come to January, and he say he, he, he don't have answer. He say he have possible answer for June, 30. And now the, the, we asked for money, and they say, and he say, we don't have any money for that year's air conditioning. And we come every month and long.
Well, we, again, we, you can't come back on the same subject, we've talked about that. And, and so I would encourage you to, to call the office and continue. We've had a dialogue, it's been very open, the administration's spoken to you. We've explained where we are, and it's great to, to talk to us. But as I said, Trenton and other places are, are the places to go. So, so, so thank you, thank you very much. Are there any other comments? Is anyone going to talk about something, something else?
Mr. Caldwell, if I could, Dr. Caldwell, if I could just say one thing. I think it's very important to point out to the public here today is that, as I sit here and listen to the conversation, it feels like a conversation that this board hasn't addressed the issue of air conditioning in the last five years in these schools. Under Doc, clearly, right? So if anyone's here for the first time tonight, I want to make a point that, under Dr. Johnson's leadership, he immediately addressed air conditioning in Lincoln School, and did the third floor, I think, two years ago. We immediately did air conditioning in Livingston School. So every year, or every other year, this Board of Education and this administration has addressed... So every year, every other year, this Board of Education and this administration has addressed this problem. And I just think it's important to note that we're having a conversation as if this Board of Ed hasn't addressed it and hasn't taken your request seriously. Every year that we can afford it and that we put it in the budget, we've done so. And we're looking to do that for next year also. So I just think it's important for me to note that point. And that this isn't something that's gone unheard. There is air conditioning on the third floor and we start at the third floor because that's what gets the hottest. And we make the adjustments that we need to make for those days when it's over a certain temperature. So I think that you will have answers once we get next year's budget and we get our state aid and we bill next year's budgets and we can be able to afford to put that in with all the other priorities that we have. You will be known and you'll get an answer in terms of what our position is so that you know whether or not we're gonna fund it for next year or not. And you're really not gonna know that until March or April, and we don't know that until after the budget is even voted on in April.
And approved.
Yes, thank you.
There any other comments?
Yeah, I feel the same way.
Process. Thank you very much. All right. Is there a motion, item number fourteen, to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A low call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Sedowski?
Yes.
Ms. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Shikitis?
Yes, I abstain on item AA.
So noted, Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Excellent. Item number fifteen, the finance committee report, Mrs. Sedowski.
Thank you, Dr. Caldwell. Uh, the finance committee met earlier today and, um, I need a motion to accept the, uh, finance committee report. And, um, can I just say something about Mr. Hush very quickly?
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Hush was a graduate of New Brunswick High School class in nineteen sixty-seven. He was a track star here at New Brunswick High School. He still holds the hurdle record for a New Brunswick High School student. He was also a county record holder for a while. He is a Vietnam veteran. And I personally am gonna miss him desperately. Um, very quiet, very shy, and, um, but a true, true gentleman. And I will miss his laughter and his professionalism. And, um, I just think, excuse my language, but he is one hell of a guy. And he is gonna be missed by all of us. And so before a motion for the finance committee, I just wanted to say that. And I appreciate you listening to me.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you.
So now I need a motion to accept the finance report.
Very well said. Your motion?
So moved.
Second. Low call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Sedowski? Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Shikitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes, abstain on page fourteen.
Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And, uh, yes, that, thank you, Pat. And so often people come here, they think the work of the board is here in public. Ron may not have said much in public, but was a very, very outstanding board member. And the work happens, but not here. It happens behind the scenes. And so he will be missed. And what a, what a, what a good guy. And, um, um, so, um, yeah, he will be missed. So item number sixteen, I'm reading the resolution for closed session. Whereas the Open Public Meeting Act NJSA ten colon four to six provides that certain matters of the public body may be discussed in closed session. And whereas the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, personnel matters, matters of attorney-client privilege. Now therefore be it resolved that the aforementioned subjects shall be discussed in closed session by this Board of Education and administrative staff. And the minutes of said closed session discussion will be made available to the public when the reasons for the non-disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act no longer exist. Zero motion?
So moved.
Second. Low call, Mr. General.
Mrs. Sedowski?
Yes.
Mrs. Seawood?
Yes.
Mrs. Shikitis?
Yes.
Mrs. Solis?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer? Ms. Varela?
Yes.
Ms. Ortiz?
Yes.
Dr. Caldwell?
Yes.
We are closed session.